Commissioner's Court Bradshaw will be in regular session on October 16th, 2018, 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioner's courtroom in County Administration Building, under the effect of Saturday, June 1st. First item on the agenda is indication and pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag and the Commissioner's period of allegiance.
If you bow your heads with me. Dear wise and loving Father, let me say thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work in the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We ask that you grant us wisdom to govern, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in doing what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, personal peace for our lives and for the joy of our tasks. We pray for our armed forces and first responders to keep them out of harm's way. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one individual.
Second item on the agenda is called for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we will move to number three, presentation and discussions, presentation of Tax Assessor Collector for the new tax office website, Kristin.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
It doesn't sit on there real well, but she can pull it off of the mic.
That's fine.
Yes, it's on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. I wanted to come today and visit you a little bit and give you an overview of the new website that the tax office has launched. The last week of September, we were able to launch this website. It is, by the way, at the same location as the old website, so the website address is the same. And the staff worked very hard on the content of this new website. We worked on the design with the vendor, and we also worked on the actual content to make sure that it was basically fine tuned and not overwhelming, because sometimes websites that you use have so much information that it's difficult to go around and find what you mean. So using the radio buttons here, and I don't know if I can get to them, I need to show you a little bit more right here. The bottom part of the screen here where it says announcements, and actually any portion of this website, we are able to modify and change live. So if there is something like the Department of Motor Vehicles system might be down, we may not be able to process motor vehicle transactions. We often are down for up to, I say often, we are down periodically up to two hours or more. With this public, they're constantly having to leave and call back and trying to find out if the system's up. We can actually post that information in this area. Any kind of announcement that is impacting our work or anything that we're doing, or even the county, we can post our contract that we have to do. Now, it's a very simple website to go around. I do want to point out that the information under property tax and motor vehicle is very specific to those transactions. I do want to say that under motor vehicle, choose any one of them, notice that the radio buttons are still available at the top of the page. We start out with information that most people are interested in. What do I need to do to get my car registered? Where do I go? And we list all the options, and we also list all the locations that we have that we have subcontracted with. So anyone in the county that has their notice and has their inspection can go to these locations if their vehicles not expired, and they can pressure their car there. Anytime that the tax office is open, and during the time the tax office is open, it's a convenience to them. We've done this for quite a while, and it's important to get the public to understand and see that. So we do have that information along with quite a few bits of information down below as far as title transactions, frequently asked questions, just trying to get the cleanest information out to the public. Not too complicated, though, because once it gets complicated, they need to contact us anyway. So one of the things that we did want to do is make sure that we had included, there you are, where it lists where people can go online and register their vehicle online, we give them a link right there to the correct website. We also have another link to the correct website, because if people go and they Google Texas Motor Vehicle Division or Department of Motor Vehicles, the websites that come up first are not the correct website. They are vague websites, and these people charge additional fees, and they oftentimes retain the customer's credit card information here, and they will automatically register their car following year without their permission, because basically they have given them permission on that website. So we're trying to make it as clean as possible for the public to get to the correct locations. Now, obviously, there's quite a bit of information under property tax, and I don't want to bore you with all of this, but we have some very clean information. Under news, we have the closing as far as holidays go. Useful links is any agency that touches our office, including Department of Motor Vehicles. All of those links are there. Now, the cleanest and the neatest part is where you go to pay taxes. Our old website was very, very difficult to navigate in. As a matter of fact, the staff would spend hours on the phone with people, walking them through the steps and helping them make a payment online. So this particular website is a tool. It starts with a statement that says, you know, this may not equate what is current, and that's because this is not our actual database, it is a digital database. It is updated every 24 hours, so the information that what we do in the office may not show for 24, possibly 48 hours, depending on the type of transaction. But as soon as that person accepts the fact that, okay, this is the most recent information available for the website, it gives them some tips on how to go ahead and search all the options. And then the search option is extremely clean, and I don't have a way to type anything in right now.
Do you want me to type something?
Yeah. Why don't you just start typing an address? Say a house number. Okay. If you look, it's a very intuitive search. It gives you every address that's out there. It has any number on the website that has that, it has property ID numbers. It is so easy to find information. And not only that, if you back that out and type F P L D and A N, and I'm just asking for that, because you see everybody named Felton, anybody with a Felton in their name, if you type F P L D, then every name that has F P L D shows up. And say I want to look right here. It is very easy to see on this particular account what taxes are paid and what taxes are not. And the person can just grab the ones they want to and throw it in a payment card. They can actually view the account and go to the payment card from there. They can either full amount or partial payments. It's very, very clean, and it also allows someone to put their name in, and it pulls all of their properties up. So if they want to put all of their properties, pay all their taxes at once, they can do that. On our previous website, you could only pay one at a time. So this is going to be very, very useful for property owners to be able to handle this. One thing I did want to show you in this particular case is when you go into a property, and it gives you all the information. Obviously, you have the opportunity to pay it, but it's giving you all the information on the property. There's also some additional little radio buttons right up here. Right here, I can pull up a tax bill, and I can print it, I can save it to PDF, or I can email it to myself on this property. So anyone can get their tax bill at any time. The tax, five-year tax history is also available. And this little button right here that says be alert is especially needed, because people can basically sign up to get electronic messages every time the tax roll hits the website. And I had several people do that. I got Candy to do it, I got Judge to do it, I got Commissioner Catalina to do it the other day, I did it, and I got a text and an email with a link to my property. So this website is fully interactive with handheld devices, and you can pay on your handheld device as well.
I was looking, I was just following along on your handheld, and your handheld presence is
It's perfect.
Wonderful, the mobile device.
It is. One of the other things that we're doing in conjunction with this is when the tax bills are received, by the way, they're being mailed probably today, I know they're printed and inserted, I believe, it should be the post office today, there will be a QR code on the statements this year, and you can read the QR code with your tablet or with your phone, and that will take you directly to your property on that statement. So this is going to be much more interactive. One other really neat thing that you can do, and I'm going to go back to the search here. There it is. There you are. If I go back in, and I want to look at a different one of these accounts, look at this one that happens to be paid. There's an additional radio button, or it should be an additional radio button, excuse me, there's not one, that one is 2018, and that one doesn't have the F P L D. So I can search. Oh, yeah.
Just dig the back button.
One back button. Okay. We'll go a little further down to this one down here. This one's unpaid, but I happen to know it has some partial payments on it. There's also the opportunity to view and print your receipt. So those people using the website will need to, if they're using it to pay, it's about, I don't know, five days to a week to receive the information and process it, and then they'll be able to go back out here and print the tax receipt from the website. And that's going to be the way that they'll receive their receipts for online payments. The other benefit to this website is that it's very interactive, and it allows us to receive files for the electronic payments and update them here electronically. The only payments we cannot do electronically are partial payments. We have to still post those manually, but we've been importing files now for a week and posting payments, and it's working very cleanly, very nice. I have to say, I want to thank the staff for workings of our content, I want to thank the IT department, because they have been very helpful in helping us get this lined up and making it look the way it needs to look, really. But we're very excited about this, we think it's going to be great to, you can't phrase us, update, wake up to the offering online with the tax office.
When you, I thank you for this presentation. I think it's a great asset to our constituents. But something that I'm asked often is, in Brazos County, how do we break that first tax dollar down, or what's the percentage of the taxes paid in Brazos County? Is that anywhere?
The information, well, when you say percentage, the five-year tax history that's listed on the back of the statement is actually also available. You can pull that up in three years as well.
That's there.
That's where the percentages are. Also, obviously, you can look here, it does get straight down to which entities are filling, and the amount of the tax for each individual one. So that information's provided also on the tax bills. It is out there. And this is a great tool for not just owners, but mortgage companies utilize this, title companies utilize this, even our law enforcement officers use this when they're researching different locations and people. It seems to be, I can't find a whole lot wrong with it right now, I'm sure someone will, and they'll tell me about it. But as far as the tool goes, I think this is going to be great, and I just wanted to make sure, and thank the court also for allowing us to bring this forward.
Thank you.
You good?
Looks great.
Thanks, Kristin. Yeah, I think this is going to be a great benefit for the taxpayers of Brazos County who are trying to pay taxes. It's always aggravating to get onto a site and then have difficulty to get anything done. I know there were complaints in the past, and so this one looks like it's really going to be good for that, so.
Thank you. I think it adds to the truth in taxation, too, and I thank you for that.
Okay, we'll move on and consider and take action on Agenda Items 4 through 27. Number four is Resolution 18-01 for supporting the creation of Brazos County Regional Mobility Authority and the petition of Brazos County for Authorization Form of a Regional Mobility Authority.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made second, so we're going to have a discussion. Doug, who's going to, who wants to come up and kind of give us a brief overview of Dennis? Come on up.
I'll give you 30 seconds, and then I'll turn it over to Doug to write me through this, but the Regional Mobility Authority gives us a new tool that we can use in Brazos County to allow us to build some major projects that we otherwise would not be able to build. It's not the silver bullet, it doesn't solve everything, but it's a very useful tool. I think as we look at this, we have to commend both the Bryan District and TexDOT and the Metropolitan Planning Organization and Bryan College Station, are two entities that had to support this, had to help us make it happen, and they did. There was a huge local involvement in putting this together. We had working groups that met on multiple occasions, and it all came out from a handful of elected leaders who were asking exactly a year ago if this looks like something that we ought to consider, let's take a hard look at it. And we spent 12 months now putting together the proposal, the ideas, meeting with people, getting letters of support, and it comes to you today. Depending upon the outcome of your vote, what happens next is it gets submitted to the Texas Transportation Commission for them to review and fit action on, and I'm sure there'll be some back and forth between us and them as they go through that review process. If it all goes well, and TexDOT likes what they hear, and then over the next six months, they'll conduct a public hearing through the Bryan District of TexDOT on the proposal, and then in about a six-month timeframe, it would come into reality with a minute order from the Texas Transportation Commission. I'd like to particularly thank two people who are here today who have put a lot of time and effort into that. One is Dan Rudge, Executive Director of Metropolitan Planning Organization, the other Doug Bramwell, who helps out the Hopeful Jones and Carter Office, had a lot of times gone in helping his staff. I'll turn it over to Doug to explain what this is to you.
Well, that's all right, I have a lot of food.
Did you want to control this?
Yes, ma'am. All right, well, howdy. As mentioned, my name is Doug Bramwell, and I am with Jones and Carter in South Brazos County. I do have with me two of my partners, Adam Robal and Rob Maxwell with me as well. And so, just like Dennis said, this was about a year in the making, and some of y'all have probably seen this, some of y'all have probably seen it multiple times, so I'll just, I'll go pretty quick through it, and then we can answer any questions that there may come in. All right, so this was an advertisement in the Austin Business Journal paper that said, "Welcome to Hell," and it was three quarters of a page. It was pretty wild, and they were touting that, come to their development because the lack of mobility is a strength, and this was pretty crazy that this was in there. But Austin knows how bad their mobility is, and we're not there yet, but we're at a fork in the road. And so we started looking at, you know, how do we fix some congestion and travel times on our roads, and the level of services are decreasing. And so, you know, we looked at a few different areas out there, and what was available in our regional mobility was one of the items that looked promising. So we looked closer into what is that, and how can we benefit us? I'll just briefly talk about what is an RMA, how do you create one, and then why would we even consider doing an RMA? So real briefly, it is a countywide independent local government authority, it's a political subdivision of the state. It is regionally focused, so it is all of Brazos County. It's not just College Station, it's not just Bryan, it's all of Brazos County. And essentially, a local TexDOT district within a TexDOT district. And so I'll show you this. So the Bryan District's 10 counties, and there's a picture of what it looks like. And I want to focus that we have the interstate that goes through our district, it goes through Walker, Madison, Leon, and Freestone County. For Madison, Leon, and Freestone, they rank in the bottom 50% of population. Brazos County ranks the top 10% of population. In fact, there are so many people that live in Brazos County that if you were to take the population of Washington, Bryan, Mylum, Freestone, Burleson, Leon, and Robertson in Madison Counties combined, Brazos County still has more people. That's almost a whole district. That's a lot of people, and Brazos County's only about 500 square miles. That's a pretty staggering statistic. Another piece of information that's good to know is, in fiscal year 2017, Bryan District's budget was about 45% for construction and 55% for maintenance. We have that interstate that goes through our district, and so that's taking a lot of resources, plus there's a lot of roads and bridges within the district that TexDOT has to maintain as well. So there's a huge strain on all the resources that we need. And our point being is that we need some more help, and what we really need is if we have the district not being 10 counties, but essentially being one, and to have the focus beyond just all of Brazos County where the majority of the people live, that's pretty powerful stuff. It does not have any taxing authority, it does have the power of eminent domain, it's not limited to only roads, as I've got another slide that shows all the different things that you can do with it. It really emphasizes local control, and all the local leadership is to pick what we want to do and the way we want to do it. We can add counties at a later date, and we can also extend projects into the adjacent counties. We can do lots of different things with this entity. It's not just like a, it's a protected TexDOT district. We can do not only roadways and tollways, but rails, bridges, we can transit, public facility facilities, parking facilities. It's got quite a bit of things that you can choose that you'd like to do. As far as funding sources, they can get pretty creative on how it puts together a deal. An RMA can pursue money from federal highway rail funds as well as Texas Revenue, General Fund, Mobility Funds, and State Infrastructure Bank. You can look for ways to leverage money to make a project happen. Currently, there's nine in the state, so Brazos County RMA would be number 10, we'd miss 12 by just two. But anyways, it is a, what would you call it, a central Texas RMA is probably the most notorious. There's lots of roads on there that you drive that operate, and you see a huge difference between North Travis County and Wayneson County that you drive, South Travis County. And it's really geared because of the RMA there. So how an RMA is created, so step one, county commissioners authorize the creation of the RMA, which is essentially, that's where we are at today. After completing step one, a petition is created and it's submitted to the Texas Transportation Commission. It's reviewed there and then through TexDOT. After a successful review there, the Texas Transportation Commission will issue a minute order that creates the RMA. After such minute order, Brazos County would accept that minute order and then put the board together. Odd number of directors, the presiding officer is appointed by the governor, and the Commissioner's Court gets to pick the remainder of the directors. So why consider an RMA? So in the past, all the RMAs have been created, TexDOT has assisted with the startup. I have reason to believe that the same thing would happen with this. As Dennis mentioned, this, we get a tool that we don't have currently, and as he said, it's not the silver bullet that's going to fix all of our problems, but it's going to give us opportunities that we don't currently have. What it really does is it demonstrates to the state that we are being proactive, organized, and as engaged as we can in trying to fix all of our own problems. It's local control, everything is done here locally, does not raise your taxes because they have no taxing authority, does allow projects to happen quicker because the RMA can take the lead on them, do lots of different types of projects, and it works collaboratively, not just with the county, but with TexDOT and also with the state. So if you bring it all around, this really gives us something that we don't have. Not every project would be a good RMA project, but we do have a few that we are looking at that could be an RMA project. Really, what this does is this gives Bryan College Station a lot of visibility. I think that we are one of the best kept secrets in Texas in that no one knew that we had so many people here. And then when we have this RMA, it's just a gleaming light to everyone in Austin that says, wow, there's a lot of people in Brazos County, we need to send some funds down there for all the roads and all the infrastructure related. And as Dennis mentioned, this has been openly discussed in lots of public meetings. We've obtained, well, the county has obtained layers of support from Chancellor John Sharp, Representative John Rainey, and Kyle Distel, Bryan District Engineer Lance Simmons, A&amp;M President Michael Young, the MPO of both cities, Brazos Valley EDC, Lynn College, and Chamber of Commerce. So lots of people are very interested in this. But at the end of the day, we don't want to be the next Austin. I'll rip through that as quickly as I could.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Can I call for a question? Yeah, I'd like to just say it's an exciting day for Brazos County. Passing this resolution is the first step in creating an RMA as far as the legal process goes, but it's far from the first day. It's been an ongoing project for over a year. It's been an educational experience for our community led by our teacher, Doug Bramwell, and Dennis Christensen. There are a lot of thank yous to go around, and I'd like to recognize just a few. Doug and Dennis, Lance Simmons, TexDOT Bryan Regional Engineer, Dan Rudge, thanks to the MPO's Technical Advisory Committee, especially Tim Lomax, and all the private and public community entities that have written letters of support. It's truly been a very cooperative effort by the entire community, and it's with great enthusiasm that I'll be voting for this resolution.
Thank you. Judge?
I call for
I would like to also say, you know, this, from Doug, from breakfast conversations we had more than a year ago when this
idea came up when we were talking about things, I thank you for that. Dennis, for your support in this, I particularly want to thank both of you, because the idea of local people who have professional skill sets and want to work on a community solution, I don't know, I mean, very, very many people, I want to thank Commissioner Berry also for her role in this and interest in it. This is a wonderful way for a community to come up with a solution that fits their needs and starts a process. So I can't tell you how excited I am about this after a lot of work, but I particularly want to not just thank all the folks that Commissioner Berry did, but Dennis, your work on this, your leadership in getting this together on behalf of the citizens of Brazos County has been phenomenal, and I thank you for that. Doug, for your professional expertise and support in this, and your sincere interest in the needs of our community, I thank you for that as well.
Thanks, Commissioner. I want to thank, hold on, just one second, Commissioner. I too want to thank everybody. This is really a great day, a great start. We've still got a lot of ways to go, and hopefully this will all happen. This RMA is something that, after y'all brought it to light, we talked about it, I think it's something that we do need, and hopefully we'll be successful moving forward. So I'm excited about it, looking forward to us moving forward, and thank each one of you that everybody's already mentioned for your role in getting us to this point. Now, Commissioner?
I want to say I appreciate the efforts of everyone involved in this, and it is true that you all showed us how easily that you all showed us how easily we could all work together. I'd like to call for the question because we haven't voted it.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries, this unanimous. Thank each one of you. Number five is approval of 2018 Brazos County Tax Rule per Section 29.09E of the Texas Property Code and the amount is $88,949,656.82.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is request from the District Attorney's Office to issue Diner's Club Credit Card for Brian Baker, Melissa Carter, and Gracie Perez with a limit of $1,000 per employee.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is request from the Expo for a variance from comp time for full-time hourly employees from October through December 2018 due to the heavy event schedule from mid-September through December 2018. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is request from Elections Administration for a variance from comp time policy from November of general election for December of City College Station runoff election.
Approve. Motion approval.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of following job descriptions. Class Code 1519, Positions 03, Detention Officer Temporary for Sheriff's Office Detention.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is renewal of health employee benefits approved for Texas Association of Counties TAC for 2019.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is renewal of workers' compensation alliance with Texas Association of Counties TAC 2019.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is renewal of malpractice coverage with the Health and Wellness Clinic for Gallagher in Healthcare.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is contract renewal for GovCoast Trade Center for Juvenile Residential Services.
Move approval.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 14 is funding agreement with Texas A&amp;M University System for the benefit of Eastwood Airport.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is agreement for the payment and use of Brazos County funds by and between Brazos Valley Fair and rodeo in Brazos County.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is council service agreement with CEO Technologies for the monitoring of the log cabin at Boomfield Cemetery.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is approval agreement 19-059 for monitoring the log cabin at Boomfield Cemetery Matrix.
Move approval.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 18 is agreement with 19-058, a petition maintenance with Expo with Rob Peltier Construction, Inc. Move approval. Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 19 is permission to advertise for bid 19-085 genital replacement products.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 20 is request to purchase 14 vehicles in the amount of $413,742 for Brazos County Sheriff's Office Jail Transport in Constable Precinct 1 and Constable Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 21 is consider and take action on ETX Energy LLC Utility Permit to install a temporary 10-inch water line within and along the right-of-way of Long Trussell Road for a distance of two miles, projectable provide water to an oil well site located in Precinct 2.
Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 22 is request permission to enter private property of Valerie Homes at the corner of Holmes Road and Fountain Switch Road to clear brush on the fence line for better sight, distance sight located in Precinct 4.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 23 is expenditure journal entries FY 17/18, 13-0079 through 13-0089.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 24 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval, A through C.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 25 is budget amendments. Budget amendment was 17/18, 5.1, and FY 18/19, 3.1 through 3.2.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 26 is personnel change status.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 27 is claim to claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8008679 through claim number 8008902.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 28, Sheriff's Board on inmate population, Sheriff. Attorney Judge and Commissioners, 686, going down a little. That's 573 males, 113 females. We have 60 with electronic monitors and 18 are pending. Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Number 29 is acknowledgement of mother reports submitted in September of 2018. Number 30 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
I'd like to invite everybody to the Brazos County Fair this weekend. It's an exciting lineup of activities, so hope to see everybody at the fair.
Hope this rain will tone down just a little.
I was going to ask if they were going to put in duck braces.
You can bring the ducks. I'd like to thank everyone on staff, that includes the Expo, the Sheriff's Department. I have to take my hat off again to the work crew. Mr. Dickie, you know how to choose them. Everything that we needed, we had in our work crew for the tire amnesty this last weekend. We filled the trailer to capacity. This is the first time we've had to push and hold tightly tires. The whole event went very smoothly. We had great weather, but we had great cooperation from all the staff. Col, thank you so much for your staff. You choose well, too. I'd like to thank everyone that participated and those that did not, we will have another tire amnesty in March 2019. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I want to mention that we've got the election workshop this afternoon, I think at 2:00. I apologize, I have a prior commitment that I will not be able to attend. Okay, okay. All right. Number 31 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Here you are, we'll adjourn. Thank you all.